So smile.
Thanks.
This is a workshop, as we propose, between the library trustees and Camden Select Board and Town Manager. Fundamentally, there's no specific agenda. We don't, this is, may only be the first hopefully of workshops between the library group and us. Because communication is key to understanding, as I mentioned earlier, to Nikki, I think you Sylvia, I think, speaking once a year to each other across the budgeting process is not always the most efficient. It can be, but it can be challenging too, especially in today's world, the challenges for town funds and lower taxes. So with that, I think one of the ideas at least here is to have a dialogue.
Excellent.
A dialogue between the parties and try to understand their respective positions of the town in general, which the library's part, and the library itself, which its own significant challenges, I'm sure. Like every department, we deal with significant challenges these days. And as a backdrop of that, just leading off with my chin, as it were, the town in general had, like many towns and cities in the U.S. today, has significant challenges with infrastructure and other issues we need to deal with. It's not because of years, what's the, years of neglect, it's because of years of trying to manage the funds. So that's part of the, that's part of the backdrop here. Allison, you want to say something?
I just thought maybe at some point we should all go around and introduce ourselves.
I was going to do that, absolutely. Thanks for reminding me. Thank you very much. It's very important, because I don't think I know everybody well in the room, but I think that's part of the backdrop. We'll get into that discussion and same thing from the library's perspective. But with that, I agree. I'm Bob Falchiani, I'm Camden Select Board.
John Claussen with the library board.
Susan Taub, library board.
Amy, the library board.
Betsy Perry with the library board.
Dennis McGurk, library board.
Pat Jones, library board.
Allison McKeller, select board.
Marty Wolf, library board, steering committee.
I'm Sylvia Kalabi. I'm president of the library board at the moment, and this, we're here because I invited Bob out for a cup of coffee to, you know, in the, in the run-up to the final budgeting process. And our cup of coffee, we stretched it out over two hours. Bob had a lot of concerns and questions, and that's why we're here today.
I'm on the staff at the Camden Library. I'm Ken Gross. I'm the assistant director at the library.
Good to see you, Ken.
I'm Mark Ratner. I must be on the select board because all the library people don't recognize me being in their meetings, so.
Jenna Lookner, Camden Select Board.
And I'm Dave Jackson. I'm the director of the parks at the Camden Public Library.
Audrey Taylor Bell, Town Manager and Camera Operator.
(Laughter).
(Inaudible).
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 Yeah, get back in the, get back in the throw.
(Inaudible).
Just as an FYI, also, when you are speaking, try to direct your conversation to a mic. It's pickup is decent, but if it's too far away, I might want to pull them a little closer.
Shall we introduce Nikki? She's back there.
Nikki Mayon is the library director. Thank you.
Cool, thanks Nikki. Yeah, we can start anywhere you want. Nikki wanted to start with this brief, a brief rerun of the library budget, and that would...
Okay, so I thought we would go through this very quickly, a slideshow, just to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of the budget, you know, what we spend our money on, how we make our money, et cetera. So I will bear with me for just a few moments. So I wanted to start with information about today's library and about today's library use. About 230,000 people come through the doors on an annual basis, and of course, that's not 230,000 unique individuals, that's Camden, you know, in and out of the doors using its library day after day and week after week. We check out 260,000 items. Our internet and wifi are used over 1,000 times a year, and the wifi in particular is some of the best in town, so it's very highly coveted. And 26,000 people attend programs each year. All of that data together makes us what is called a five-star library, one of the top 85 libraries in the country to achieve this five-star status. And again, it's based on use per capita. Not only are we a five-star library, but of course, we're a national historic landmark. And all of that means, in my mind, that we're special. We're special for a variety of reasons. We're special because of the kinds of programs we offer. The photo on the left is of our Girls Who Code, that happens once a week, and it's a program so, to kind of level the playing field with technology for girls and women. And on the right is a picture of our History Center, and that's again, something that makes us very special. We take a great deal of time to archive local events and records and make them available to the public. And something else that makes us very special, and that is Camden itself. On average, books are, books and other items are checked out nationally about eight times a year from public libraries, but in Camden, that average is 20 items a year. And again, that's something that makes us very special. So quickly, this is how we are funded. The big pie chart starts at the top with donations and grants at 25 percent, endowment and bequests at 15. Eight percent is book sales and Harbor Arts, 48 percent the Town of Camden, and 4 percent fees and fines, et cetera. And we're going to drill down into that just a little bit, and I'll go through this again quite quickly. These are donations of all kinds here on this, illustrated here. Harbor Arts and Books, some of our, actually is our largest fundraiser of the year. Book sales, library card fees, those are fees we charge to non-residents. Late fees. Endowment funds, again, on that big pie chart, it was 15 percent. The amphitheater rental, those are weddings, of course, and that ubiquitous other income at almost 25,000. Then, of course, the Town of Camden. And this is a projection of the next fiscal year, that 478,000. So again, that really large picture, 48 percent on the left, the Town of Camden, 52 percent library staff, trustees and volunteers. And this is, again, the very quick look at how we spend our money. So again, we start at the top with books and ebooks at 7 percent, the building and facility at 10, programs and developments at 3 percent, staff and benefits, the big, big piece of the pie, Harbor Park and Amphitheater at 6 percent, and miscellaneous at 10 percent. And again, drilling down very quickly, books and magazines, newspapers, et cetera, 69,000. The facility itself, heat lights, maintenance, and, you know, everything needed for the facility on a, out of operating on an average day, comes in at just over 100,000. The amphitheater in Harbor Park, the gardens, et cetera, at 54. There's that staff piece, and this includes benefits as well. We have the equivalent of 10 FTE, but really 15 people. And opens seven days a week, of course, 64 hours a week. Computers and technology at 20,000, programs and outreach 31, and that kind of everything else at 77,000. So you'll notice that the expense total and the income are exactly the same number because that is how we budget. That is our quote, if you, you know, business model, end quote, if you, if you want to look at it that way. We don't budget to make money, we don't budget to lose money. We budget to break even. And again, one last look at the big picture. 20 percent is spent on what, what we do, our product, if you will, building and grounds at 16 percent, and staff. So that leads us to the facility. Over the last six to eight years, we've been able to accomplish a great deal with the facility because we were the recipient of a very large grant. We were able to do things like re-carpet. The carpet at that point was 20 years old and was really in need of replacement. We were able to paint indoors and out, do a bathroom and kitchen refresh, upgrade the technology infrastructure, which again, at that point, was 20 years old. We did some repair work to the slate roof and to the copper gutters. The copper gutters were actually replaced, and that was a very pricey project. We did some work to the iron railings and reinstalled a stone pathway on the south lawn. We did some reworking of the History Center space to enable ultimately that room to be open every hour that the library is open. But with, as with any facility, there are ongoing needs. These are the things that are facing us over the next few years. The HVAC control system at $40,000. Then we've got a smaller list, the repair caprail on the Fonz Garden staircase and the masonry steps repair. Those, that 17,000 or so is something we hope to fund with a grant, and we are working on that even now. Then we need to re-point the Stonewall on Atlantic Avenue at between 20 and 22,000. Again, that is something that I believe the library will be able to fund. Smoke alarms, we are told that everything needs to be replaced. We did, need to do some work on the, the decay on the concrete back steps. These are steps that staff uses every day. We need to install a railing on the Atlantic Street steps. And then we'd really like to replace the, the lights throughout the building and bring them into LED, because of course, over time, that will save us a lot of money. And then the really large thing down there at the bottom, the green, what I call the green roof, that's the, the roof over the new building, that cost is estimated at 850 to a million dollars. That's not something we have to do this year, but we will have to be doing it in the next few years. So as I said when I went through that list, many of those items are in fact, things that the library will be picking up and funding, but we really can't afford to, we just can't do it all. And that's not without precedent, it's happened before. So there was a bond project in the early 90s that replaced the slate roof, and that project was in the neighborhood of 200,000 dollars. Then about 10 years or so later, there was another bond project to do some long-term maintenance work in Harbor Park and the amphitheater. And those, of course, were capital projects, just paid on credit essentially. So I, you know, I just ask you to bear that in mind. Then in 2013 and 2014, the Town Development Director wrote a grant to help us do some replacement work to the iron railing at the, at the original front entrance, and that was a town grant, but it was work, of course, done at the library. And then we had some major storm damage about six years ago in the parks, and again, beyond our capacity to, to work with. And so the town stepped in and did the cleanup, helped us redo some of the planting, and that was, of course, funded by the town's insurance claim. So that's the recent past.
Does the town carry the insurance for the library building? Is that part of our policy, or is it?
It is. It is. It is part of your, the, the building and the grounds.
Thanks.
And then last, I wanted to bring everyone up to speed on the Campaign for the Future. You've probably heard some about this. It is a campaign to provide for long-term stability for the library. It's a $2.5 million campaign. We are currently at 1.6. That money, of course, includes lots of support from local businesses, which is very encouraging to us. We were, we publicly launched on April 6. The campaign has been, was in the silent phase before then, and you may, this slide may look familiar to you because these, this was the invitation that you should have all received to National Library Week events when we launched the campaign, again, just, just a couple of weeks ago. So let me close with the inscription that was recently refreshed on the original front entrance. The building was erected in 1920, well, it was starting to be built in 1926, finished in 1928, erected by the united effort and generosity of the community. And that really was the beginning of the partnership. So.
Thank you.
I'll come to the table.
Good idea. Sit down, appreciate it.
Don't you bring your microphone as well?
Short supplies.
They are short supplies. Well, perfect. There's a, there's a little backdrop regarding, you know, the comment I made earlier about town as a general, I think you have, think mostly know all of this, but, you know, we certainly have spent a lot of time in the last years trying to manage the process, to manage the process of what we have to do, and in terms of, in the town in general. It shouldn't come as no surprise that the town, as I said earlier, some sagging infrastructure and this building included, it just boggles my mind when I look around this building and look at the energy that blows out the window of this thing, and we talk about being an energy-conscious town. No. This is just one example. Infrastructure.
The water coming in the side every time.
See, the water coming in the side of the building, areas of the building that are not at all conditioned, like the area below us, which has valuable materials in it, which we've brought up recently, and they've survived after 100 years somehow. I don't know how that actually happened, but it did. The infrastructure, of course, now, most recently with this winter we've had, we've got some roads that are failing around this town that have a little bit of a problem, so we're going to have a challenge with that coming into this, into this spring, repairing that as an example. But one of the things we, we've all on the select board tried to manage is the process of, you know, forecast and how we, how we can turn to the town's people and say, we have evaluated everything, options regarding everything that we have control of, and one of, a lot of which we don't. We do not control one penny of the school expenditures in this town, which represents 65 percent or so of our, of our overall budget. But we do and have very religiously tried to, and I, at least from my perspective, on financial planning, saying, we're going to try to manage this to, you know, X percent per year in terms of tax increases. Can't always accomplish that. We have major infrastructure that's been approved by the voters for the wastewater treatment plant, which is probably some 20 or 30 years overdue for being repaired. We talk about infrastructure as an example there. And things that should have, could have, would have been fixed, there's a switchgear in the wastewater treatment plant whose parts haven't been available for probably 10 or 15 years. They've been bought on eBay because that's the only place we can find them. That's not the way they're running operation, I agree, but that's what they do. Because, one of the reasons, because some of our directors that Audrey has, working for her, are absolutely phenomenal, and able to keep, with chewing gum and tape, to keep some things together. That's an example of a big one. But there are numerous, numerous smaller ones. So yes, we are concerned. We are concerned about many letters I get from taxpayers even recently about, I'm not sure I can afford to live in Camden. And this is, I don't know how many that is, I have no idea, but there is one or 10, it doesn't make a difference, that it is an issue. Taxes can't go unbounded, we have to control it, which means we have to control and make decisions on expenditures, as you well know, across the board, and they're not always going to be easy. I always said that I've never seen a, a bad proposal brought to the town for expenditures of money. It's never bad, it's just a question mark what you can afford to do. So we take the same perspective on any one of our operations in the town. And our relationship with the library is a little bit more, has been historically, a little more arms-length in terms of the 48 percent you mentioned, Nikki, as a, as a contribution. We, in my opinion, I don't see us as really being in control of the day-to-day budget that you all, the trustees, have to deal with, but I'm sure it's challenging as heck to also accomplish the same thing, modest increases in budget and still maintaining what this town loves in its library. This is not a debate about the value of the library. I said that earlier when a few of you are here, this is not a debate about that whatsoever. We don't even want to go there. This is more of a debate about, you know, this, like in our own personal lives, there's many things I would like to do at my house, but I kind of have to put some off sometimes because I don't want to spend it all, and I can't, and I just can't do that. Same thing with the town. We, as public officials, we don't have that ability to just say, yeah, yeah, this is all good, 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 let's just, no, we have to control it. That's, that's fundamentally where we're coming from. So with, with that, you know, that opens up discussions about, you know, how we relate to facilities and if, you know, for all intent and purpose managed by others in terms of development and budget, in terms of operational, day-to-day, that belongs to the library trustees and this capable woman to my left. And that, that's important, we understand that, but we're not dealing with, I mean, I want to keep this off of any, you know, I said, library, good, bad or indifferent, nah, nah, don't go there. Don't even start, don't even start there. Right, wrong, no such thing. No such thing. Opinions? Yes. We all have different opinions. Sometimes this capable guy in the corner, Mr. McGurk over there, and I have technical backgrounds, and we debate stuff, that's kind of fun for us. But that's just what it is, it's just fun to debate stuff, that's all it is. But be it the snowball or other things, in this case, the library, yeah, we have opinions. But, but there's more fundamental issues going on, I believe, here, with regard to how this operation relates to the town. I don't believe it's clear. I'm, I'm exaggerating to make a point, you know, because again, I've only been on the select for firms two years now, but monitored the town, watched the town that operates for about 10. So I don't pretend to be an expert, but I do know that if you don't talk, if you don't communicate across the, across the table, literally, it's going to stay there, and it's going to be this, what's the select board going to do to us this year, you know, or what's the library going to do to us this year? I don't want to mention the school board, because that's another story, and I don't want to get into full of the words. But, I'm just kidding, they have their own challenges too, but it's, it's challenging. It's very challenging when you don't, we don't have control in any way, shape or form of how you develop budget, the budgeting process, the expenditures and where they're done, the programs you do, and we want to be careful that we start getting into the, your pockets, you might not like that too much, and vice versa. So that's, that's the conundrum, I think, that kind of lays the table for a general discussion. Thank you for reviewing the budget, you did it before, and you did it even better this time, but I think it does lay out the challenges you all have, and as you and I discussed at coffee, that challenger, you know, that's what we're here to talk about. So it's an open discussion. I'm not going to sit here and pontificate. Anybody else wants to jump in with, with concerns or comments, that's what we're here for. Sylvia?
Bob stressed to me his desire to form a plan for the town, and the library trustees believe in planning as well. I mean, not just on an annual basis, but we're looking ahead three to five years, maybe even, maybe even longer. So I think, once we realize what you had in mind, you know, we, we would like the library to be part of the overall Camden plan, whatever that is. So we're here to tell you about what we have in mind and answer your questions.
Mark?
First, I want to say I'm above average, I think, on the average I look, I take, I take out about 75 books a year, that may be a little conservative. So I'm contributing quite frequently to the Sushi 500 overdue. I think a substantial part of that is mine because I just can't read as many books as I want to. So I am doing that personally. I want to say, you know, there is, one of the concerns I get when, you know, this select board has the ability to look at everything, but we're not experts in everything, and one of the things, there's a certain point where you have to trust the people doing the job to do the job really well, and the fact that the library is one of the top 85 in the country. And I know the statistics that Nikki gave earlier in one of her previous meetings about how much more this library is used than libraries all up and down the main coast is substantially good. And what I, from my personal viewpoint, is I don't want to, I want to make sure we're not trying to race to the bottom, but we're trying to keep ourselves at the top of the, top of the, of the library world. You know, so I'm, I'm very much a supporter, and any way that I can, we'll find a way to, to help you get what you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison?
So I too am a very big supporter of, of the library. I've gotten a few emails from, from people and some trustees sort of wanting to convince me of the value of the library, and that's very much not necessary. I've lived here my whole life, my kids go to the library, it's been a source of pride for me and for my family for a long time. I've researched it extensively. I think, for me, it's, you know, three years ago, I got on the Budget Committee for Camden for the first time, and, you know, you see that big number that comes up from the library, and it was very much presented that it's not really an oper, because it's not a town department in the same way. That budgeting experience isn't really an opportunity for us to micromanage how much is spent on office supplies, or, you know, of course, there's, there's always a desire to do that, and I think every year Nikki hears what, exactly what the rate should be for the renting of the amphitheater or whatever. And, and, you know, everybody's polite and you listen to, to input for that, but it's always been stressed that, okay, this isn't, it operates in a little bit of a different way, and it's more about whether the Budget Committee and the, and the town and the select board will recommend that overall number. And then we put the trust in the rest of the decisions about which programs should get more funding or less funding, and what to do with all of that money. The trust goes into the, the library board of trustees, because part of Mrs. Fox's vision was that a group of experts dedicated just to that would do a better job than, you know, if it's all mixed in with the select board and all the other things that we have to worry about. And so, you know, I've seen every year 20,000 in increases, and that's been part of the long-term planning of the library, which I've understood was the goal to get the town to 50, about 50 percent of the total operating budget. Is that correct?
I, I wouldn't say that that's, you know, that, that's a goal I put on paper. No, I, I wouldn't. I would say that after many years of no increases due to the, the economy and many other factors, you know, we're just trying to, we're trying to make some ground up in terms of what in fact we can, how we can function, and also after many years of, you know, everyday services being supported by grants that we no longer have, and entities such as, you know, MBNA and different local family foundations and so forth, it's, it's, it's a matter of what we need to do.
Okay. So, but the overall transition of saying, okay, the reality isn't the same in the grant world, the town is going to have to keep chipping in a little bit more. I've seen, it was 20,000 the first year, and that's the debate we've had on the, on the Budget Committee, was, okay, is the library, can, can the town afford $20,000 more than they paid last year? And the answer has always been, in the circles where I've been, that there's been some debate, and then, yes, okay, yep, $20,000 more, we can handle that. So when it now becomes not just that 20,000 more, but then a new additions to the conversation that are, okay, now, instead of just that, that, that planning of $20,000 more that the town can sort of predict, then to say, okay, now it's going to be $40,000 in some other pot for this, for the HVAC system. And then we have the green roof, which we've decided that, you know, needs to be paid for, and we're going to pay for that out of a different pot. I think that's where it starts to come as a surprise, that, oh, whoa, I thought the library board was responsible for all of that planning and management, and that the town could kind of expect a steady, you know, we would, I imagine we would continue to debate this $20,000 increase, or 23, or whatever it becomes, every year. And whether, whether or not it's necessary for the town to chip in is sort of a, you know, to pay more is sort of a different issue, but it becomes a fundamental discussion about how we are structured. So if we continue to say, okay, we're, it's a town building, it's just like any other town building. Well, it's not just like any other town building, because when people ask me questions about any of the other town buildings, it's, you know, I have a key to this one. I'm here all the time, we're, I'm sitting here looking every, every time an invoice comes in for anything in town, with all the town buildings, you know, we all sit there and we're like, did you see that this week? Or you got this from this and this from that? And so it's this constant process where we're monitoring it. When I get questions from people about, why are you spending money and not on this and not this? It's sometimes difficult to answer, and sometimes I don't have a good answer, but at least it sort of falls within our wheelhouse. Whereas when somebody says to me, well, why is the library doing this instead of, you know, why is the library investing in girls' education programs rather than in, my own personal favorite, digitizing the newspapers? Or why are, you know, why is the, the, I mean, the History Center is a, is a big deal for me. But it's not so much about individual programs, but about our ability and the appropriateness and whether it is appropriate for the select board to be weighing in on where money and whether it is appropriate for the Select Board to be weighing in on where money should go. We haven't, all those years when you were receiving the grants for the building maintenance, it wasn't considered appropriate for the Select Board really to be saying, wait, hold on a second, are you going to, why are you going to update all of your technology when, instead of putting this away for this? Or why are you going to do this instead of this? And so I think if we do want to move to a model where there's more, the town forever maintains a, you know, library capital, you know, building capital reserve fund, that we, like we do with all of our, we have Opera House, every single building has a reserve fund. If we want to move into that realm where the library is just like any other town building, then that may be just fine. I'd love to have a little bit more voice in how, you know, how the library allocates money. But is that really what everybody wants, to have Bob crawling around in there telling you exactly what kind of HVACs is?
You don't want that.
How much more interaction do we want? I think it actually would necessitate maybe a look at the bylaws to say, you know, the library doesn't operate under a lot of the same rules as the town. I don't know if you're, are you subject to Freedom of Access requests? I don't find meeting minutes on your, you know, what we require of the town in terms of Select Board meetings, all of those filmed, live-streamed, available, minutes available on website, all the, there's sort of a very high level of scrutiny that doesn't happen with nonprofits a lot of the time. And does the library really want to fall more into that model?
So everybody is aware of the ordinance that was passed in nineteen ninety-eight, which unfortunately is, has everyone seen that?
I don't know which one. Tell us what, tell us which ordinance.
About the library, and it's supposed to define the relationship between the trustees and the Select Board. It's unfortunately pretty vague still.
Yes, really.
But, but, from what I have gathered, of course, you know, that's long before my time here, from what I have gathered, those discussions, this kind of discussion was happening then too. And it's, I believe it's happened many times over the years.
No doubt, no doubt.
And in nineteen ninety-eight, they tried to clarify the relationship, and really, they set up a system with, you know, Select Board Liaison. They said that the trustees were, they confirmed, reconfirmed that the trustees were responsible for, you know, the programming, for what happened essentially at the library. They didn't say a whole lot more than that. They also said that the library was to serve the community and the surrounding communities. And so I really just bring it up because we've not only, we've been here before, and both before and after that ordinance was revised, shall we say, you know, the town did in fact fund capital projects. So again, I do understand, Claire, I think this is a great conversation to have, and apparently it's a one that we have every twenty or thirty years, from what I can gather. But we, not only have we been here before, but, you know, if you look at the model over the years, I don't think that what we're trying to do here is totally out of line, although I understand, we all have needs, and it's all a balance.
The other thing that we discussed, or Nikki and I have been talking about this, but I had a question about how, where did this roughly fifty-fifty funding model arise? Because this is very unusual for a town library. Normally, you get all or significantly most of your funding from the tax base.
True.
And we don't know. It's lost somewhere in the dim past. We tried to ask Mary Louise Curtis-Bach here, but she's...
What I do know is, again, when you go back through things like town reports and so forth, it does seem to have begun at the beginning. You know, the town is bringing in what amounts to half of what they, what they need for the year, and that does seem very, very consistent over the years. And this may be just, you know, too much information, but I do have a chart here, which just compares us to a number of other libraries, Rockport, Rockland, Belfast, that kind of thing, and what, you know, the dollar amount that's required for, from the town for those libraries, and what that percentage is, and also how much each library brings in, in terms of fundraising.
Does it compare total annual budgets also?
It really, it brings in its revenue from local government. That's what I was focused on here. And while we're doing paper, I just want to be sure, because there was some confusion about this, has everybody seen the breakdown of the library budget?
Yes, yes.
I guess that, when I stare at that, it's hard a little bit, because it's not done in the same, it's hard for me to tell which programs cost the library money. And it's not broken up into, it's not done the same way that our...
Which category are we looking at?
She's talking about a different issue. She's not talking about...
Oh, you're not talking about the chart, I'm sorry.
Oh, you were talking about the budget. The, did everybody see the...
Oh, you mean this, okay.
And I wonder if that's, if I've seen the one with, is that available on your website? I've had a lot of trouble finding things on the website.
It was, we don't, no, it's not available on the website, it's available on the town website in terms of, with budget process.
Yeah, right.
I've got plenty here, if you like.
I think, to your point, Nikki, I think it's extremely valid that in public world, things get revisited, not the least of which reason is because some of us change out with elections. And there's no question there's a learning curve to some of that, but you're absolutely right. But to your point, and first of all, don't get me started with ordinances in this town, because if I start going down that hole, we could spend, we need two more staff members just to correct the problems we have in the ordinance development. But I think, I think the, it still remains, to Allison's point, the need for clarification of how this goes forward, because all of our, philosophically, we try to, Arda does try to run our departments in a certain manner, as Allison suggested, we're involved in every decision. You either, you kind of get two things, you get arms-length or not. If you don't have arms-length, then you're going to, there's going to be a need to get into what's being spent where and how, and what's being budgeted, what's being forecast, so we can move it into the model of town, if that's the route we want to go. But that's a more, I don't think that's ever been answered. I've never seen anything that's really answered that, in terms of the past history of Camden for the last at least twenty or thirty years.
Well, if the question is, are you arms-length or not, I mean, I think the ordinance, I think that is one thing it does answer, and I think it says, you know, it doesn't say blatantly, but it says that the trustees are responsible for what happens at the library. And I think it's very, really very clear.
But it also says, so the part of that is that the Select Board gets to approve new board members, and what we've, or trustee, Board of Trustee members. And the philosophy, or, I don't know what the philosophy has always been, my philosophy when it's come has always been, just approve who the library thinks is, should be on there. With committees that operate, normal town committees, we're, right now, we're trying to choose who should be on the Harbor Committee, and that's like, I mean, it's like a college application, because so many people want to be on it, and it's, you know, we are required to make it totally open. I don't think we've ever said, you know, we're going to disband the Library Board of Trustees and try to start fresh to meet all of our new goals. That would be, I don't think we would legally be allowed to do that, but a huge overreach in terms of this, like, arms-length relationship. But should we start to, I mean, I don't even know how, the Select Board clearly has some sort of oversight, there was sort of, there was intention for oversight, because we're asked to approve all the new members. So how should we be exercising that level of oversight? Should we be saying, you know what, they really need a engineer or a fundraiser? I don't really want to get into doing that like we do with the other committees. I don't know what, how this board, how many members are there?
We have fourteen at the moment, we're chartered for as many as seventeen. Next, you'll soon get a couple new names for approval. But I should point out, we have a seat at our table for a liaison from the Select Board.
Yes, and I accept, I will accept...
Before you jump into that, I, when I came in here, I was asked about the liaison thing, and I made a comment before I knew you were here, I don't think the liaison thing across the board works at all. I believe that, and that's not because of the liaison, it's because of the spirit of having a liaison and a committee and a board, or whatever it may be, they don't, I don't, in committee, I don't represent the board. I don't. I can't speak for the board. I have difficulty even spending the time to communicate with the board on what I learned at a Harbor Committee or a Parks and Rec meeting, because we just have, we're a little buried with a lot of stuff. So, so, yeah, I get all that, but you know what, that model doesn't work, in my opinion.
Okay, I was going to say, I disagree, I like the liaison principle, I think it's important to have somebody there. And I just have a quick question for Nikki, and then I know Janice, I'm going to say, how much, what was the amount of money you spend on programs every year? You had that up in the...
I think, let me look here. I think the one, the slide included, we have several lines that would include programming, the slide, yeah, it is multiple lines. So we span between thirty and thirty-five, generally, again, with, you know, with these multiple lines, yeah.
Thirty-five.
And what I want to jump in and say is that I am sort of the liaison that has been in absentia, and I think that there are a couple of reasons for that, and there are a few people in this room that know them. As liaison, I, last year, I was at many of the meetings, if not most, and these names for the board were just presented. I, as liaison, was never a part of those discussions. They would come directly to the table at a board meeting out of, I guess, a committee. And so there was not a lot of discussion or obvious opportunity for people to get involved. And I look around this table, and without, in any way, shape, or form, you know, profile, I think that we really could use some diversity and some kind of call to the community on this library board for some different energy. I mean, not, it seems that people are just handpicked and brought forward to the entire Board of Trustees, at least as I saw it, and there was no opportunity for discussion. There was, and I may be wrong, but I never saw transparency in the application process or a call to the public who's interested in being involved in the library board. And that, that to me was a little bit, is a little bit concerning. I mean, if someone wanted to get involved that didn't, would, I don't know how people would know about those opportunities.
Not always Camden residents, right? Are there, is it mostly Camden, the majority are Camden residents on the board?
Yeah, the majority is, and I think we have one person who's not, but is a property owner in Camden. So, so let me just talk about what the process is. So we do have a nominating committee, and they, you know, library boards in the best of all worlds represent the community and represent the diversity of the community. So we always keep that in mind, and we try to have, you know, people of all ages, you know, people with families, business people, and all the rest. And we have more than once put out a call for people that were interested in being a trustees, and we have an active list. So we look at the list when we have an opening, we try to bring a person forth to, again, to balance the community. So, for instance, if we have, you know, if the majority of our board are retired people, we're looking for somebody of the younger generation who has a family, hopefully. Again, because they bring in a different perspective and a different energy. So then the nominating committee...
Library in a different way.
Right, then the nominating committee will confirm that that person is still interested in perhaps serving on the library board, and we actually have a one-page job description, you know, just talking about, you know, what might be expected of that person, so you can have that kind of conversation with them. And then their name is brought to the entire Board of Trustees, and that is the opportunity for the trustees to discuss, and they do. And I think in my time here, I believe that all but one, possibly two of the votes have gone through when they've gotten to that stage. But usually, it's, a lot of that is, it's done behind the scenes, if you will, because nobody wants to embarrass people, and, you know, it is, it is a public meeting, even though we don't televise them, it is a public meeting, the public is invited to come. So that's, that's our, that's our process, and, you know, anything that you might suggest to make that even more transparent, I'm open for.
Sure. I think not working off, always refreshing that list and examining new people that may want to get involved as our community. For example, my husband is the director at the Montessori School, and numerous families with wonderful professional backgrounds have moved into this community. I know of several that just are enrolled there in the last year. People that I think are really wonderful, very educated, very interested, very engaged, and I just think that constantly keeping that door open and making sure people know that it's open and that they can get involved in that way is not only beneficial to the community at large and representation, but beneficial to the library too, that people are saying, I moved here for this lot. I mean, that would be a wonderful thing to say, you know, here's a couple doctors that moved here with their kids because they love the library, I mean, you never know.
I don't like to brag, but I have heard that comment many times in my years here.
I have too, and that's why I bring it up.
And it's a wonderful thing to say. Thank you.
I don't want to end this conversation about board members, but I want to go back to the issue that Allison raised, and offer a perspective as the treasurer of the library. And I was also treasurer of the, or chair of the Centennial Fund, one of our endowments, right? So I have a perspective on this. The issue before the board now, the library board and the Select Board, is about large capital expenditures, not about our operating budget. That twenty thousand a year really is making up for a gap that is caused by maintenance and other unexpected expenditures, right? The Picker Grant paid for some capital things essentially for a while, okay? And we don't have that philanthropist right now filling that gap. So that's the reason we keep going up about twenty thousand a year, it's not because we're expanding programs, we're trying to hold our own, right? And apparently, you know, Mrs. Bach and the ordinance back in the nineties addressed the issue, it's our responsibility as trustees on the operating side and the program side, what's before us now, we can revisit that relationship, but what's before us now jointly is large capital expenditures. We cannot afford to pay for those capital expenditures unless we drastically reduce programs. You can't get four hundred thousand dollars or more out of programs, you're basically going to shut the library down. And that's where the focus should be, how do we jointly fund capital expenditures at the library, not how much you should be involved in our selection of programs? I think we're, I think our attention is diverted by something that's not before us right now. If you want to manage how we buy our office supplies, that's a separate issue, but it's not going to solve the issue that's in front of us.
Allison?
What I want to manage, or what I would have more input on is the fundraising philosophy. And the, so I understand that you're in the midst of a major campaign to raise the endowment, and that's wonderful, and that can target, I think, a certain demographic that will be interested in contributing to that kind of a fund. What has been frustrating to me is the sort of unwillingness to fundraise for certain tangible projects. I believe strongly that if you put out a sign even, or you do a small little fundraiser on Facebook that says, listen, the heating system in the library is in danger, or the green roof is in danger, your beloved children's wing is in danger, that there are many people like me who are not going to, probably not, I might buy a brick or something for the endowment, but probably not going to, you know, I'm not in the stage of my life where I'm planning my will necessarily, or, but lots of people like me will donate fifty or a hundred dollars towards some sort of tangible project that can generate results. There's a different, there's a different demographic, there are different ways of going about fundraising. And so that has been the frustrating thing for me. I think sometimes you need to give the community an opportunity to recognize, there's a problem, we have a, we have a crisis here with our, with our HVAC, can you help us solve it? And some people will, will jump to that.
Can I speak to that? Because I totally agree with you. And the, two hundred and fifty for a single mother or elderly person on fixed income who uses a library is a lot. And so I had told Nikki that I would be happy to join the fundraising, to go and stand in front of French and Braun, or Hannaford's, and also people, not just those people, but you never know who might say, wow, I didn't realize. So I totally agree. So, I totally agree. And hopefully, I'm gonna go to the meeting tomorrow. I, you know, to, I'll be willing to sort of spearhead that aspect, because I, I feel so strongly, the library, I'm a new member of the board, but it's a community center. It's not just where you get books. But I feel so proud of how many free programs we have and how many are just even, we have the programs, handing out envelopes to say, "Give fifty dollars a hundred," and have people feel a part of giving that. So, I'd like, I'm just speaking for myself, and that, maybe that's inappropriate, but I'd like to say we're gonna do, just not asking for the, the big donors who are hit up by lots and lots of people, but try and get the whole community to realize what's in jeopardy. So, we're doing, doing our part, but we also can't raise the, all of it on our-
Raise a billion dollars, that way for the green roof. That's not gonna happen.
But it's, it's not gonna happen, but it's, it's just more, almost symbolic for the community to use-
Well, I do want to say something here also, because I've been looking into the green roof for some time, and the issue really is that it's a huge expense, and while we have a fundraising for several purposes, and we're just getting into the active phase of that now, so there are gonna be an awful lot of asking of individuals for two hundred and fifty dollars, five hundred dollars, whatever it is. But, as John said, that's not gonna add up to a million dollars. And the original plan for our fundraising, and we hired someone to help us with this, was to raise five million dollars so that we could, in fact, defer or carry some of the costs of these huge capital expenses when they come up, as well as replacing some of the endowments that have gone away. After our quiet period where we tried to reach out to the people that have big budgets, we don't have Charlie Colley, we don't have Parker Lake, we don't have Harvey Picker anymore, and so, it's been a challenge. And our professional advisor said, "You're not gonna make five million dollars. You need to scale back. Two and a half million dollars might be achievable, but it's gonna be hard work." So, we're planning that hard work. It would be nice if we could have gotten to five million and handled both the replacement of the missing or the expiring endowments and do the capital expenses, but that's not in the cards. It's just not in the cards. So, we have to find a way of, of raising the significant amount of money. Now, it, like Nikki said, it's not tomorrow, but it's not ten years from now either, and if we don't plan for doing it relatively soon, we'll be faced with an even more chaotic and more expensive version of replacement than we're facing now if we plan for it.
If you're wondering where the two and a half million comes from, it wasn't just simply picked out of the ether because we couldn't make five million. Harvey Picker's Brantah Foundation gave us a certain amount of money some years ago, and Harvey didn't like endowments, part of the, part of the rules where you've got to spend a portion of this every year. A year ago, we, you know, it disappeared.
Right.
So, that left about an eighty thousand dollar hole in our budget. And at a conservative four percent return, we figured, okay, this is, you know, we can drop back to two and a half million and count on the return from that to fill our eighty thousand dollar hole.
Right.
Four percent? Pretty bad investment.
It's doing a little better right now, what we already had, I would hope.
I don't believe the committee even knows that there's a, there's a big issue with the roof or the, or the, or the heating system. I mean, so we can sit around forever and say that it's, all of these fundraising goals are impossible, but I don't, I don't know if that's true. I don't understand the unwillingness to at least put it out to the community that the library is in need, that we invested in this amazing building, and that it's, it's not gonna last forever unless we raise some special funds for it.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing two ideas, which, which I think are good ideas. Number one, the idea that we're looking at, you know, when I asked about the programs, thirty-five thousand dollars, that's, you can take all the programs away, it's not gonna solve any problem at all. That's what we're talking about, the, the maintenance, the big-ticket maintenance issues, which is what this meeting is about, and I agree about that. But I also agree with Allison that there is a smaller world of fundraising and awareness that you can bring to the problem, you know, where there's a public campaign, not just with the major donors that you tend to go to over and over again. I should turn my phone off. But, so I think there's a, there's a common ground there, where let's concentrate on the big issues, but let's see if we can assist, or maybe some fresh thinking about the fundraising to, you know, maybe start with the HVAC system. You know, the, the green roof is probably gonna need to be a bond at some point. And talking to Dennis about the green roof, for the people that are watching, one of the big problems is, is we see there are tremendous construction situations going on around Maine right now and around the whole country, where it's very difficult to get people, contractors, to do the work when you need them, and it needs to be planned in advance. We had that problem with the school. Rockport just hit a major snag with their library construction situation. Their, their bids came in way over what they thought. And what Dennis has told me previously, if the roof starts to leak before it's, it needs to be replaced before it starts to leak, because if it leaks and then you try to get, if it leaks in January, you can't get a contractor to come in and replace that roof. It's gotta be planned for a specific time of the year where it can do it. So, if things go bad at the wrong time of the year and we're not prepared for it, there's a huge, it's a disaster. And that's what we're trying to look forward to. We're trying to plan for the forward. But I also think that maybe we start a fundraising campaign, and maybe it is in front of French and Braun, and publicity in Penn Bay Pilot and on Facebook and on Village Soup, where we're talking about the HVAC system, and what happens if that fails in terms of mold and danger to the, to the collection. So, I think there's a middle ground here that we need to move forward with.
Very quickly, I just want to say, coming from, I mean, limited, I guess, but a nonprofit museum fundraising, public relations background, I feel that Allison is quite accurate, as are you, in the lack of visibility in this fundraising campaign. You know, I see things, there was one day that so many things came out on Facebook that were fantastic. It was like a history day, and it was one post after another, and I couldn't keep up with them, but I was like, "Oh, I want to buy a brick. Oh, I want to do this." And I think that there are a lot of strategies, and of course, Facebook isn't gonna reach everyone, but the library means so many different things to so many different people in this community. This isn't just Penn Bay Pilot and Village Soup, which are both wonderful, but this is a national thing. We're looking at the Star Library. This is the kind of thing that will be picked up. The history is really quite important, and I think that having a menu when you fundraise, I mean, I, I raised money for, to restore a nineteen oh seven Renault Vanderbilt racer. That was about six million dollars, and I didn't do it all myself. We, you know, had a lot of, of help, but the visibility and Article and Hemmings really helped, and we had to provide, we had to finally, trial and error, finally created a menu of, "Do you want to donate to the electrical system? Do you want to donate to this? Do you want to donate to the HVAC infrastructure? It's hard to raise money for that stuff. But do you want to donate to the children's programming, to the History Center, to the endowment, to give people these different buckets?" And I understand that that means making restricted funds, and I know that there are a lot of people here that are far better versed in that than I am, but I really think that with collaboration, with the community energy, with more people involved and feeling not just embraced by the library, because I think that's not a problem. People, I mean, feel absolutely embraced by the library, but feel that they have some buy-in for what is important to them, and whether it's, you know, the little lady that writes a fifteen dollar check once a year, and that's what she can give, and she loves it and gets a wonderful thank you note, or the Harvey Picker. We need to have that visibility and that kind of collective energy going toward it. And I know we're talking about big-ticket capital items, and I, I just think that we have not exhausted or even perhaps scratched the surface of our ability to fundraise against those numbers.
I have begged for the opportunity to be able to raise money for the History Center, for the digitization of the newspapers. Begged, sat down with Nikki, said, "When can I start? I will do, can we just agree on a number?" And what I, what I've been told is that it can't happen until the endowment campaign launches, or that there's reluctance to do fundraising events simultaneously, or, and I just think that that's, that people need to be able to have options for what they-
Well, I believe we, we have to have a fundraising strategy, and that's really what I, what I was trying to say, Allison. And in terms of the digitization of the newspapers, I mean, we've discussed what the state was doing at the, at statewide level and waiting for the state to decide whether or not they were gonna do a newspaper in the county, because it would be a really-
For a long time, though, they didn't choose us.
Well, and, but they're doing a second round now. That said, however, the way to get those newspapers digitized, in my view, is to write, is to go for grant funding, because, again, we have to have a fundraising strategy. You must realize we're already raising over two hundred thousand dollars a year for operating.
But there are people that will donate to the History Center, but not to these other things. I will give a thousand dollars to-
We're already raising over two hundred thousand dollars for operating. We've got a campaign going to help us with the future. You know, how many Harbor Arts and fundraisers can, can we do?
Wouldn't be like that.
That's, that's where I come from. We need a strategy, and I don't, I don't believe that just, you know, putting this out there or that out there is, in fact, a strategy. The community will only do so much for us. They do a lot for us already. We must remember how much they do for us already. And I should say, I find this frustrating as well. I find, so, we, for instance, we tried a, we, we put the Winterfest this year out as, on Kickstarter, and we didn't get any takers with that at all, so-
I wouldn't donate to that.
But a lot of people would. Winterfest is very popular. So, all I'm saying is, our public can only do so much in terms of fundraising, and we have a tremendous reach already. We work very hard for that.
Yeah.
So, we need to pick and choose. That's all I'm saying. We need to have a strategy.
Fundamentally, we keep going around this, we're walking around the same circle we walked in with. Basically, when I, I use the term, it may not be the right term, by the way, but I don't, we don't have line item approval, disapproval here, or its creation. That's why I mean "orange light." So, we pay a stipend of forty-eight percent of, you know, better part of a half million dollars a year is our contribution, whether it's right or wrong, that's another discussion. But when we start going into another area of required funding now, look what's opening up. Do we, do we go to, do we go to get some money, more money from the public, which I know is a challenge? I must get ten or fifteen solicitations a week from various entities locally, some national, but locally also. It gets a little bit tough to choose between where you contribute. But we, but back in that place where it, for me, to be able to turn to taxpayer and justify why the town is paying for whatever it might be, I have to be able to say, "We, it's because", example, just an example, this is a point by exaggeration, please, but let's say there was a, indeed, not as, as, as well as yours is here, didn't spend a lot of money on preventative maintenance. Happens all the time, which we have the problem here in this town. We don't spend enough money on preventative maintenance. That causes systemological problems in buildings. How do I answer that to the public? How do I know that we're doing a decent job? How do I know that the expenditures on preventative maintenance are adequate? In our town today, just a philosophical difference, we, because of the infrastructure demands I mentioned, we have, we have kind of three tiers of funding for infrastructure. One is tier one, it's broken, we gotta fix it. We have a public service building. For two years, five of the seven compressors don't work on the building. That's broken. It's gotta be, gotta be fixed, you know, just gotta do it. Second level, a tier of investing is preventative maintenance. We want to make sure we don't have, you know, downstream, the replacement of, of certain things. Lastly, the last tier of funding comes to, and it's just unfortunate, I'm not bragging about this, I'm complaining. The last tier is, well, we, we just gotta, you know, go, go for new. You know, that, that's the way we have to approach things, because of demands and the finances of the town. We need to take the same philosophy to anything we fund beyond, again, my term "orange light." I don't want, it's no term I know Nikki to use in this situation. I'm not, I'm not complaining about just what it is. We need to address that, and how we go forward with addressing that may take a subgroup to take a look at, how we may be able to publicly fund as an option for some things, how the town can assist in, if necessary, in getting bonds and grants, you know, and also look at, you know, what we can afford to do when, you know, in terms of the three to five-year forecasts. You mentioned, that's extremely important. We've gotta communicate that, in my opinion, and I'm not criticizing, criticizing myself more than anybody. I haven't had two discussions with you about the budget of the library. My bad. All right? Individually, I haven't done that. And we need to do more of that. So, probably, what I'm feeling is, we're not gonna solve it today, I didn't expect to. We have identified it, I think, as an issue, and if we leave it on the table, and then in two thousand nineteen and two, I won't be around, but in two thousand thirty-nine, we're gonna be saying the same thing.
May I have a turn? Hi, I'm Marty Wolf, and I just, wanna just piggyback on what you just said, because it's so true. Because I read minutes from, I don't know how many years, I started back in nineteen ninety, and I think I read fourteen years' worth of minutes. I wanted to know what past practice has been, and, and I love my, my conclusion. I'm gonna read it. "After poring over these records, it's clear that the town and the Camden Public Library are in a partnership much like a good marriage. They do not always see eye to eye, but do emerge intact after occasional spells of disequilibrium." And so, so I say we can look at our Harbor Park, which is pristine and gorgeous. We can look at the amphitheater, which is like standing in history. We can stand in the, in the reading room and look out that, that huge Paladio window and off the ha-ha wall. And, and all of that is a gift, is a gift of this town, and the management of that is huge. And to watch this cycle of how all those problems of taking care of infrastructure and books and programs has been solved over the years, and to see it come out in the shape it is today, tells me something is working. Now, we may need to have to take care of our buildings and our gifts, and that may come as a surprise sometimes. We're all doing the best we can, whether we're a trustee at the board, at the library board, or we're a select person sitting. I don't envy your position, I'm sure you don't envy ours. But we are partners in the, in taking care of this gift that was given to us.
Thirty-year cycle, don't we?
And right now, we're maybe at the bottom of this cycle. Yeah, we're talking, I'm sorry to go from the specific to the vague, but we're talking about communication issues here, aren't we? And when we were doing the initial research to launch our campaign for the future, we discovered there are two, two big blank spots in people's consciousness or knowledge of the library. One is, most people in town weren't aware that the town only pays half of our expenses, and the other thing was a little more vague, but it was, we had, we heard a lot from people about, "What, you need money?"
Right.
"The shining library on the hill, you need money?"
Exactly.
Problem Camden has in general.
We kind of teased Nikki a little bit, doing too good a job, you know?
Yeah.
If we had a few leaks in the roof, you know, with a bucket on the floor, people would get the point.
That's what we did at Owl's Head to get, let it leak on the Curtis Jenny.
I didn't realize you were doing fundraising at Owl's Head.
I was PR, and we didn't have a development director, and I was the public relations director, so I helped develop lots of those materials and promote them.
Well, I really wish you'd been, you'd come to more of our meetings lately.
I will, I can start that.
Yeah.
And we can have a discussion. That's something I'm very passionate about, and I think you have a very good person advising you, and I wish, I'm sure she's probably traveling, but she's a wonderful resource. And Diane, correct, is still?
Yeah.
And I think that she's very creative and open-minded, and as they recently moved to Camden, they saw a lot of this, and I agree wholeheartedly with you, that when you don't see the problem and you're coming through town, and maybe you're somebody who will write a ten thousand dollar check because you think this place is just phenomenal, or you got married there in nineteen sixty-four, or something like that, and it doesn't look like it needs it. So, you write it to the animal shelter or another, I mean, what have you. And I don't think we should let it decay, but I think that the public, the front-facing needs have to be more, better publicized and better illustrated, bar, I mean, bar none to me, that's imperative.
There's the communication issue. Yeah, we, we may or may not solve the $40,000 HVAC controller question right here, but if we leave this meeting, you know, all on the same page, and, and, and having decided that we're gonna work together for the benefit of the town and the library, then that's, that's what we're here for.
We should do this more often.
That's what I'm feeling, too.
I don't think there's any doubt that there is a partnership, first of all. It's just that, you know, we're just, understand the bottom line of the town. We're challenged for watching the tax increases we go forward of all the elements of the town, which are far beyond just the libraries, you well know. But now with these, I mean, last year, we talked about beyond the Green Roof, there are other systemological concerns a year ago that I didn't hear this year, and that's good, bad, because what else is lurking? You know, I don't know, and by the way, we need to communicate those things. This, this meeting, this first workshop, is, is just trying to reignite the discussions between the two partners. And how we do that, I'm not sure we have to do it with 14 trustees and five board members and a, and a town manager, that may be gonna get a little heavy. But we've gotta do, we've gotta do something. We need an action plan from this meeting to do something to increase the communication, effective communication, not just attendance at a trustees meeting. I don't believe that's sufficient, because you got a lot of things you need to accomplish at trustees meeting, and we really probably don't want to get into it all, and we shouldn't.
It's just too much of a burden for one member of the select board to be in charge of.
Way too much.
We find that with the committees, that, I mean, you can see, we don't all agree on things, so it's very difficult for one person to sort of be the...
It is. One, one idea may be to, just to Allison's point, representation of the select board, representation from, key representation from the trustees, and you're all great people to talk to, but again, 14 people's just too much, and five of us is too much also. But we need to come to some agreement about some substantive communication. And I'm just recommending that as an idea. Maybe you, there's a lot of creative minds here who get that, but we, we've gotta do that. We've had to do the same thing with, and will have to do the same thing with other town assets, our duck club, and other things that have similar kinds of issues that are going on. Because you know what? Infrastructure is a problem across the board. And this gray zone of own the land, own the building, operated by somebody else thing, gets a little tricky at times, because we didn't write a triple net lease with the library. If familiar with triple net?
What?
Triple net lease. That means when an owner owns a building, owns the land, and leases the space to somebody to use. The triple net means you pay everything. You pay the lease amount, you pay, the net, triple net means net of taxes, net of capital improvements, and net of operating expenses. The tenant pays that. That's the classic leasing, you know, arms length, true arms length, lease structure. We're not talking about that, I'm not suggesting that. Please, don't, no, don't, no, no, I'm not going, no, 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 I just want, that's...
We're going backwards.
In this one, the triple net would belong to the town for the net, net, net here. But that's, that's a classic approach to, you know, the owner, lease, or user, if you were, in this case, it's one tenant. I'm not suggesting we go there at all, Sylvia, don't, Becky, don't think that. But I think we need to, we need, we need to come out of this with some action. And I think one of the recommended actions would be a, a select group of, of both sides, including the town manager, whatever you think is appropriate amongst you all, but that has to happen. And we, and we can't let that go. We can't let that stop after one meeting or two. It's gonna have to continue. We can help to continue to define the funding, how we do it, how we can help, the issues that we need to define, maybe there's action plans on both sides, to say, you know, what are you concerned about? Let me answer your questions. You know, rather than a, I really expected that would be the result of this first workshop. Or, if you prefer, an alternative to, is more workshops on a regular basis, it's fine to do that, too. I just think mass meetings can have a tendency to be a little insufficient.
I think this is great like this, and if, you know, whoever can come, can come.
I'm happy to reengage as liaison, but I really like this.
I do, too.
And I want to clarify one thing. I'm in a writing, a couple of writing groups, and people who read my writing go, you sure write a lot better than you talk, so I, I'm not maybe always articulate. But my suggesting, you know, my personal view to go to French and Braun and Hannaford and just make the community aware that this great library isn't as, you know, rich as we think, that is my opinion, to get the $1,400,000 that we need, because I think it's not gonna be so easy to get the $1,400,000 and not to pay the $40,000 and the other things. So, just, and so when we do need the money, you know, for this, this would be personally what I think, not, not just...
If we're gonna proceed with a group this size, and I suspect there will be, have to be a requirement to do some homework before a meeting for consolidation of questions and issues we want to discuss, that'd be more of an agenda.
Yeah, right, yeah.
This was a general walk-in. I mean, honestly, that's what, I knew this would be this, because we just opened up communication. I don't even know a lot of you as well, so I'd like to. But I think that, that's gonna, if we, if we do this plan with a multiple body, it's fine with me, but we've just gotta continue, and it's gotta be focused.
I have a, I have a question. Jenna mentioned, and I saw it as well, a couple years ago, maybe it was, it was Library Week. All of a sudden, there was a tremendous amount of, of posts on Facebook in terms of that I hadn't seen before. You know, I'd seen some, you know, for the children's library and Amy, but I hadn't seen that kind of attention, and it really got my attention. And it goes, how did you, what did you change to start to put that out? Who did you, how did you engage that?
You're referring to the, the Sunday where we, yes, and we, we posted every hour.
Right.
You know, that's obviously not, not practical. But we post multiple times a day now. And when you're posting every hour, no matter who you are, you're gonna see at least some of those posts.
Are you boosting the posts for residents?
We only boost occasionally. I know you and I have had that discussion before, and I think that's a, you know, that's a question of, do we really want to put money into that, or are we okay as, as is?
I, I would, I would tend to look at how much, how much exposure you get, not boosting them, because, you know, Facebook is a business, and I've discovered, I use it for my business, and boosting makes the difference between, and you can, you can really target the people that you're reaching.
Yeah.
But if you have a viable social media campaign, you can, you can reach people and get messages across. That's, the biggest problem that we all have is that, it used to be you had one radio station, and one TV station, and one newspaper, and everybody read the same thing and got the same message. Now you have digital newspapers and paper newspapers, and social media, you know, Instagram, Facebook, Snapchat, you know, it's almost impossible to reach everybody. So, you need to be really careful about your campaign, and think about it, and actually engage somebody to concentrate in that. Who do you have that does your outreach?
Our programming person does that.
Okay.
We need donate links on all these posts, too, but that's another.
Well, we're, now, we're into this workshop, certainly willing to, listening, but we want to stand back, but I think we need to come out with pattern action forward. Whether it's gonna be a medium focus, or continue this workshop on a whatever basis, or more select group, that's a discussion.
I think, Bob, if you, as a select board, I mean, you guys are very busy, and you've got all these liaison issues, as well as the other activities that you have to get involved in. So, if you could define, you know, for the next time we get together, let's focus on this particular thing, because I, I think we want to address your concerns. So, if you would set an agenda for the next time we get together, maybe not everybody, but, you know, a focus group to say, let's, let's address this issue, whether it's fundraising, or whether it's, what are the, all the maintenance issues that are we facing, or whatever it is, let's, let's have an agenda, and let's dig into it in some specifics, so that we all come away understanding what that really means to us.
I agree with you, Dennis. That's what I'm saying about an agenda. I don't want to force, or eliminate open discussion, and I think it's a good thing to, to your point, Allison, I, I do enjoy it, and I could sit here and talk for another two hours, as you know, Sylvia. But, but we have to focus, and I think it's important, because I have a lot of questions that I can list, and I'm sure others do, too, but the, the, we just, we, if we put it on the table, somebody else is gonna be here in 30 years talking about the same thing over and over again, because it's gonna recur, because infrastructure is failing in many of our buildings and facilities, and it's not gonna stop. And, and we must, from my perspective in the select, we must control that tax increase thing to the populace, because it's getting heavy on a lot of people who are on fixed income and, and blah, blah, blah. And I hear from them all the time about, I can't afford a $300 a year increase in taxes. And to some of us, that may not seem like a huge amount of money, because you're divided by 12. It's not, you know, it's less than $30. It is to a lot of people. And we, we've got to pay attention to that, because we also have demographic issues we have to deal with in the town of Camden and others in Maine, where we have an aged infrastructure, I'm one of them, and, and we're doing all we can to enhance the living capability for younger families, which are the core of the future. Those issues, I don't have the answer to them all, I just know they're there. So, that's all, just understand that, back to pressure we're under is significant, and we can't diminish that. It's nothing to do with the legitimacy of what you're asking for here, or not. But, yeah, I would agree with Dennis. I think an agenda is important. We can collectively put together ideas, we can have an open discussion and not a workshop soon. We shouldn't defer it for six months, that's just too long.
You could even address Jenna's issue of saying, okay, on this particular date, we're gonna focus on the makeup of the board, and what, what talent, what's the makeup today, what's missing?
Of the trustees.
What could we add? What, what, who, what kind of person should we go in, be going after to get on the board?
Sure.
We could, we could have those kinds of discussions.
Agreed.
You know, I have, I think I need to say that we have been aware that we haven't communicated with you well, but we, well, maybe for myself, I, I know how meetinged out you folks are, and I've, I've been, I think we've all been reluctant to, you know, email you and say, we got a meeting, you gotta show up. But, we have meetings, you gotta show up. We'd love to have you back.
Understood, and I will come to that.
We do get meetinged out, honestly, and scheduling workshops is not always the easiest thing in the world to do. However, I'm also, I think we're all collectively smart enough, if we don't talk, we don't talk.
I wish we'd had this, this meeting a year ago.
I did.
I mean, live streaming the meetings makes a huge difference. I can't go to all the, the committee meetings, but oftentimes, I'll just put them on in the background, and I hear what the Parks and Rec Committee is saying, and I'm, you know, it's really educational. And yes, I can read the minutes, but there's a different vibe, and, you know, sometimes just...
Yeah, to the point of attending, I had a workshop, whoever doesn't show up, if I couldn't make it, I'm happy to look at the results on live streaming, so I'm armed and dangerous for the next one we might have together. That's part of the communication.
Discussion, I think, is also really important, and that may be what Sylvia is, is getting at. For me, it's 3:30 on a Thursday afternoon can be a challenging time. Early, first thing in the morning is, I mean, but that's not, I think that maybe is also a challenging time for a lot of people, but I...
Most people have to pick up kids at school.
Yeah, or have, you know, are sort of right at the end of their workday, trying to get something done on a deadline, in my, my case. But I do accept responsibility for that portion of, of being a delinquent liaison, and I would like to reengage, whether it's me, whether it's other members of the board, whether it's a shared responsibility. So, I do think that, that chasm in communication is something that I own to an extent.
Thanks for respecting that, but I, you know, unfortunately, can't condone it, because, you know, I can't, because, you know, I took this job for some reasons. And, and it is what it is. We're gonna do it right, or we're not gonna do it at all. And, and that means we have to, without the communication, again, I, I don't want to be reading in some newspaper 30 years from now, I don't think I would be, but that they're talking about the same thing over, that's what's gonna happen.
But we will. You have to kind of accept sort of what...
Modern medicine, Bob, be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, exactly, I'll be the talking head.
I just want to add one more thing before, and I should be quiet. I just, I'm hopeful that the HVAC system is funded, as is sort of past practice, as a capital project from the town. And then I'm really hopeful that we fix it forward in terms of communication. I'm really concerned about books getting damp. It takes 48 hours for mold to begin to grow on a damp book.
You mean the books we had downstairs for 50 years?
Yes.
If it didn't mold.
Well, then you don't have enough humidity down there. But it takes 48 hours for that mold to start. And so, so, there was a situation in Los Angeles in 1986 with, you know, if you've read, haven't read the library book?
Yeah.
Good read. You know, so they're packing these books up, and they're getting them into freezers all over the city, you know, just, so it's just, let's just take care of our books, and take care of our communication, and move forward. That's it.
One of the things that's important to note, both for the Green Roof and for the HVAC, is that in spite of the fact that we need to plan it, if it surprises us, like it did with the leak in Nikki's office where we had moisture, it takes 24 to 48 hours before mold starts growing.
Sure.
And once it starts growing, you've really got chaos on your hands. So, we really appreciate the fact that you're willing to help us with that part of it now, because otherwise, we won't have a library.
I mean, I spoke with a contractor that installed the Green Roof, and so this is part of where, having, you know, and I do the same thing with our town things, I tend to push back on lots of improvements. But when I spoke to the contractor that was, that installed the Green Roof for the library, he said it was not reasonable to, to replace it before it fails, that that just simply isn't the way that it's done. And it doesn't, if it, if it fails, it fails a little bit here or here, it's not, you don't have a waterfall. He said, really, what you end up doing is by replacing it before it needs, there are signs that it needs replacement, you could end up, they warranty it for what, 25 years or something, 20 years? But oftentimes, they last much, much, much longer than that. And so, there may be a difference in philosophy, and this should probably be the topic of a, of a workshop.
We should.
You know, the philosophy about that, and we should probably bring in the, you know, contractors and to talk about it. But I think, you know, that's part of the pushback that...
Yeah.
I spent a lot of time talking with Lee Coro, who really was the supervisor in installing that roof. And, yes, in many situations, you can't predict when it's gonna fail, and in many situations, they do recommend that you wait until it does fail. However, for us, given the intensity of use of the library, the restricted site and so forth, and the number of people that are qualified to do it, you have to plan for it, and if you wait until it starts to leak, it won't be like many of their other projects, where you can just come in and do it, and, and fix it when you, when you need to, or when it occurs. It will be really quite chaotic for us. So, it's, having talked with him subsequently, and talked with other people in the same business, they all recommend, in our particular case, it's not a good idea to wait until it, it starts to leak.
Perfect topic for us.
It is. I think all the cap, all the capital requests fall in that category, all, including HVAC, fall in that category. Because, remember, I made a comment about, unfortunately, where we are in terms of the three tiers I mentioned of repair, replacement, where, from my perspective, I, I always define a criteria, and I maintain a criteria across the board evenly, without exception. So, that's the, that's the criteria I take toward the budget, and approval of what or Been there, done that too many times, that's, you can't go bending the rules because somebody thinks something's an absolute disaster if you don't do it tomorrow. That just doesn't work that way technically for me.
This is a good example of the communication that's, that's lacking. You know, we, we've discussed the Green Roof, and I, Ken, and Nikki, at great length, you know, this issue of, do we wait till we, till the first drip drip, or do we plan this out? You know, you...
But you don't know that we've done that.
I haven't heard the discussions, I'm, I'm not convinced of the level of scrutiny, basically.
They have gotten some of the memos and so forth, so it's, I mean, yes.
It sounds a very similar sort of way.
It may be that if I, if I heard the actual types of...
Yeah, maybe.
That might be a...
There'll be, I think all of these capital, all of the capital think, challenges the library has, certainly willing to discuss, but they need to be discussed upfront before they wind up getting hit on the side of the head, and we, and, and I'm not saying that you did it on purpose, believe me, I understand that. The perspective of this stuff is not always black and white, it's more often gray. And that's unfortunate, because that's the life we live in. And, and when the backdrop of that is the challenge of the taxpayer, it becomes extremely more gray. And so to that point, all capital type requests, legitimate as they are or not, they're going to, we should bring them right to this table and, and maybe to Dennis's point and others, that's the agenda for the next time. That's what has to happen. We can always, we can, we're partners, we're, we want to work with the library. It's important to us. We can get a great job of running the thing. I wouldn't know a bad job of running one from a good one, honestly, because I'm not a librarian and wouldn't even pretend to know where to begin. But I, but the rest of it, we will learn, want to learn. So that's what this is all about. We're not, if something were to be rejected or not, it's not because we don't think it's justified, it's just we need to have a communication so we can turn it to taxpayers and say, yeah, you know what, they're doing is, they've got to replace that damn roof and they've got to replace it within two years. You know, that could be the result. Or we can defer it for three or four, whatever, you know. And to, and to fund for it, we're going to take the following approach. You know, to, to anticipate the $14 million, $14.9 million wastewater treatment plant, that's going to be a $500,000 per year hit annually for that bond when it hits in about three or four years. Luckily, it doesn't hit till then because of grant money, we will get, we'll get other factors. But we're planning right now to, in 2020, we have funds in the budget to start the process of funding that grant money. So when it hits in three or four years, it won't be a slap in the side of the head. That's the kind of planning you have to do. Thank you so much.
Well, the weather's a huge factor. I mean, we can't, if, if we have a problem in January, we can't just replace it in January. So we have to plan in advance.
But you mean, we're talking about the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a discussion. I just don't know.
Have a separate workshop, just on that.
I would agree, Dennis, because.
Is there a vote coming up?
You know, pros and cons, and I'm not, I don't want to pretend to even know the whole thing, but we need to get on the same table, the same page with that one and HVAC and there's another one that we had mentioned, I thought, last year besides that electrical something?
No, HVAC, we, we did start talking about it a year ago.
The roof is there.
Yep.
Those are the two, those are the third one.
You know, I, well.
There's others we want to hear about too.
Well, HVAC, it's a control system, so that is electrical. Maybe that's what you're thinking.
Maybe, that's possibly true. That's possibly true. Okay, but again, don't think that any action by the board or non-action by the board is intended to injure the partnership and/or to close the door on any issue. That's not the intent. We're managing a process and sometimes we have to make hard decisions and it's not always black and white.
Is the HVAC system coming up for a vote?
Yes.
In May?
Next week.
Next week.
Well, Tuesday, the select board has to approve the budget, the total budget.
Right. And the finance committee approved it, is that correct?
The budget committee.
The budget committee.
So it'll be, you'll see on the town meeting warrant, budget committee recommendation, select board recommendation.
And town manager's recommendation.
That's correct. That's correct. There's a whole bunch of.
The other way to do it would be to, sometimes you could just put a question out totally separately to, so on the, instead of being rolled into the capital recommendations from the select board, oftentimes there's a separate warrant article that will say, like what they did with the compressors at the Snowball.
So is there a line for the HVAC on the?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I, I thought I went, read through it yesterday and did not see one.
There is.
There is right now.
I forget where it is.
For the, in the budget.
It's in capital projects.
Right.
Capital projects.
So, so just to clarify where we are, there really were no questions about, about operating? Is that right?
Tons of questions.
Oh, tons of questions about operating because I.
But I don't know that's anything that's necessary.
Well, I mean, I, again, back to my issue of, because the last three years, we've gone up, I think, 14.7% or, or budget on budget. And that increase per year, yeah, that, that does raise questions in my head. It's beyond inflation, it's beyond what we are trying to manage in the town. And it's, is $500,000, whatever it is, just under $500,000, the biggest part of it, no, it's not. But we need to take the same attitude. We take to public works, public safety, the whole long list of things the town has to fund managing, as Audra does, to make sure we, we can accomplish our objective of tax control. So the, that could be another topic for another day, you know, to talk about the foundation of the budget and how it's developed and where, where are the challenges coming from? I don't know the answer to all those questions. I can only guess some of them, but I don't know what they all are.
I, I think the key right now is the, the maintenance issues. That's where we need to concentrate because those are the emergency situations. So if we target those and then we can move on, now that we're having conversations, we can move on and have discussions about the rest of the process.
Yep. What's the next date and what are the dates coming up in the budget approval process?
May 7th is the select board vote on the budget in total.
In other words, to, to approve what goes on the ballot?
What goes on the open town meeting ends June.
Is it a town meeting?
June 13th.
13th or 14th?
I can tell you, I can tell you what, well, actually, no.
The Wednesday after the.
Doesn't have to be.
Well, no, it doesn't, but this isn't the right year to.
Those things up.
I don't think, have town meeting on a Saturday is the biggest possible. It's the second Wednesday.
It's June 12th. June 12th.
And so Tuesday is the 11th?
Yes. That's, that's election day, right?
Day one of our two-day town meeting. They're, both days are called town meeting.
Yeah.
Technically, even when you go to the polls, it's very.
Yeah, I believe, well, the second Tuesday is the 11th.
Right.
That's what it is.
So Wednesday will be the town meeting.
12th.
Open town meeting.
That's the process, that's the process for going forward.
The Opera House.
And then that meeting is covered. Well, doesn't the, the school board, that's a separate piece, but we don't approve that.
Oh, they have their own, yeah, a couple different.
The reason I ask is I'm thinking to scheduling the next workshop, for instance.
Oh, of course, of course. Whenever it's, the group feels is appropriate, sooner the better.
Sooner the better.
I don't want to do it too long. I'm not talking about next week, but.
My report does not meet during the summer, is that correct?
July and, July and August, yeah.
Does it mean we're not working? Not meeting. Right, oh, no, I know. Just as far as the reform meetings.
Workshops can, we can certainly do workshops if this number.
And also in the process, you know, the budgetary process to me is, is fundamental to determine the amount of money that winds up in the tax rolls, of course, from the town. We have some latitude with funds in terms of, sure, didn't an emergency happen in the town? Well, we had a $65,000 boiler blow up here because of lack of maintenance, in my opinion. A couple of years ago in the middle of winter that we had to replace overnight.
That's because there was an Opera House reserve fund.
That's correct. There are reserve funds for certain activities that we can impart on budgets and utilize for certain emergency situations.
Should we have a workshop before the town meeting?
Probably before, I'd say sometime in between the select board vote and.
I think it's a good idea.
Maybe before town meeting, so we can make sure.
I think before town meeting is a good idea.
So that you can get up or any of us could get up a town meeting and address some of these issues if needed.
Collectively, collectively, I think that's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. So yes, maybe early June. Is that, is that too late?
Maybe.
Let me take a look.
The last week in May, maybe?
Let me take a look at my calendar because I know I'm gone for the last week in May. Not that I have to be here, but you would either have to potentially be the week of the 20th of May because the 21st, I believe, is.
So that's after town meeting though, right?
No.
No, no, town meeting is, no, we're talking May.
May, I'm sorry.
June 11th. I would suggest, what's today, Tuesday? Tuesday, June 21st? I mean, May 21st? Be a select board night, what? That's, happens to be a select board day.
Do it on a non-select board day.
Monday, the 20th?
Do it on a select, no, no, select board day.
Monday, the 20th?
Looks good for me.
Why don't we tentatively schedule Monday, May 20th at?
May 20th, okay.
Does the morning work for everybody or?
9:00 AM in here?
Good.
Or do you want to come up to our place?
Well, I'd rather record it, to be honest, if it's okay with y'all. Monday, May 20th, 9:00 AM.
And what's, what is the agenda at that, at that next meeting?
Well, that's what we're going to establish between now and then.
Okay.
And I think we'll, I'll send out some, solicit some ideas from the town folk and I'll coordinate with, whom should I coordinate with? You or Silvio or both?
Yeah.
Who?
Yeah, with me, yeah.
Nikki, and you can compare it with notes with your group. We'd probably make a selective agenda, not 15 items, you know, perhaps a handful.
Now, let's bear down.
Yeah.
I mean, we can talk about the, I mean, it would make sense before town meeting to talk about the thing that we're going to talk about at a town meeting potentially.
Broad overview to see where everyone's coming from in this meeting is helpful and then to have a more honed meeting that's driven by an agenda next is smart and.
Are you, are you going to be able to make our next trustees meeting?
In May?
Yeah.
Which would be the Thursday, Thursday, the 20, I should be able to, yes.
I mean, we are trying to rotate a little bit more too with the, I don't think it's fair to put this all on Jenna as if she, we, what we've talked a lot about with the select board is that it makes more sense for some of us to, to rotate and.
Todd and I have talked about that. Yeah, that would be entirely acceptable.
Right. I think this is so important, it's such a big part of the town that it'd be, it'd be very important for all of us to get a little bit more involved.
I don't have a calendar in front of me, it's the third Thursday. Okay.
You know, I, I understand your concerns about the liaison system, but to me, if the liaison can come back to you, your board, with, and just convey some comfort, yes, we, we've talked about this issue, you know, add infant item, for instance, as opposed to, oh, yeah, they're just doing, you know.
No, but it's not like that. It's that, it's that we each have different skills. So when Bob digs in on whether an HVAC system is necessary or not and whether the controls or blah, that, that to me is, I, I get covered in him pushing back on things like that. It's not going to be enough for Bob, for me to come back and say, yeah, Bob, he talked about it, it sounds good. Of course he's going to, it just doesn't, that doesn't accomplish the goal. Or when it comes to, you know, a history center fundraising discussion, I don't want Bob's report on.
Please, no.
It's, so it's, it can't, especially I think with the infrastructure stuff, it's, it's really not fair for Jenna to be in charge of reporting back on, you know, the technical, you know, the thoroughness of.
Going and, yeah, it's, I mean, it's been challenging this, but.
When is your May meeting?
It's in my calendar.
The third Thursday.
3:30.
Which would be?
We think it's.
That's the 16th?
It's 16th.
The 23rd.
No, it's the third Thursday. So it's May 16th.
18th.
At what time?
3:30.
This Thursday is the second. It'll be the second.
It's the 16th.
The 16th, it's the 16th.
16. Yeah, 16.
If we could get into publishing the minutes on the website, is there, is there any reason why that doesn't happen?
No, there's no reason. And, you know, I occasionally get asked for them. There's no reason why it couldn't happen though, they're not, it is a public meeting.
Because it feels, I think asking for some people sometimes feels like, oh, I'm asking for a certain reason and, but if they're just there.
Right, and they usually honestly is in the interest that there might be in a select board meeting, honestly.
Yeah, right. Because it's, I, I put it on my calendar because we are dealing with one major issue of infrastructure and I will be at that meeting. I'm interested. And it's timely. Now anybody else can attend too, that's fine.
Mean it our next?
Yes.
When is it again?
3:30 on May 16th. I'll be there.
Is that what it was?
If it's the third Thursday, it's May 16th. Because May is kind of an odd month, calendar wise, but that's, I'd, I'd love to hear it. I'd love to participate. I'm, I'm, with Jenna and anybody else that wants to show up. If there are three of us, we just, we just can't negotiate anything because it was, we have to be careful what we say when there's a majority in a room, of course, but how did that happen?
That's okay.
That's right.
Just as a procedural thing, what happens with the recordings here? Will these be transcribed and?
They will be on, on the town's website.
It's going live on YouTube right now.
Live, but.
Yeah, and then it'll be.
Then it's.
There after.
It, it won't be transcribed into a written record, it's just linked to this particular.
Somebody wants to do it.
That's my question.
Just a video when.
DocuDrama.
And it's, it's on the town website.
There's a link on the town website to our YouTube channel and then you're going to have to scroll through that.
Camden Maine YouTube channel you can go to and it's all archived, every select board meeting is supposedly in time, all commission, board and committee meetings also.
We're a community.
We're working on it, we're working on it. It's, it's, it's a little bit of a, sometimes a little resistance, how some people, some of us don't like to be recorded because we don't look nice or, or because we just don't want to say things in a public forum, but you have to do that. We're, we live in, we live in a public world, we have everything we do.
Oh, I couldn't agree more, but I find that a written record is much easier to deal with than, you know, watching four and a half hours of a meeting to get, to get one sentence that I'm looking for.
I agree with that. I've heard that so many times too, but, well, we still do, we have to do meeting minutes